I'd like to call the meeting to order tonight. This is the Monday, February 28th, 2022 School Board Study Session of the Board of Education. I'd like to welcome everyone for being and thank you for being here tonight. We are going to go to our purpose and agenda, and I will turn it over to Superintendent Stallow.
Thank you very much. Good evening, all. The purpose of study sessions is to share information, build trust, and ensure board members have all the information they need for effective and efficient action at the board meetings. Tonight, we'll hear an energy report, which aligns to our values and practices as an eSTEM district. We'll also hear some information from our Kids Company program, an update on work related to one of our academic strategic directions, and have a brief update on budget and staffing before we go into policy review. Well, not on our agenda tonight. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the racism that was targeted at one of our girls' basketball players last week and the harm that racism and hate speech plays in our schools. I want you to know, we will not tolerate these actions, and we will continue to work relentlessly to create learning environments and a culture in which the humanity of each individual is honored, respected, and celebrated. We're working with students, staff families, and our community to improve the lived experience for each and every one of our students in our schools, and we're grateful to all of you who have partnered with us in this very important work. Thank you.
Thank you, and thinking, thank you for taking time to make that statement. Next, we are looking at our board working document. We review this at each study session so that we can measure the work that we're doing and where it fits in with our overall responsibilities as a board and strategic directions. Tonight, we will be doing quite a bit with district policy, touching on policies in the 400s, 500s, 600s, 700s, 800s, 900s, and one second read of Policy 213. Also, in terms of our work in operational oversight, under Strategic Direction Number One, Increasing Student Learning and Reducing Achievement Gaps, we will have kind of a partnered report, one on our multi-tiered system of support, and the other, a report on the instructional excellence framework. And I think that covers that. So what we're going to move on to now, under Oversight and Operations, is the PLSAS Energy Report, and Margaret Bishop is here representing Bishop Engineering.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Chair Nelson, School Board, Dr. Stallow. I'd like to introduce Margaret Bishop. She's been monitoring our energy for over 14 years, and she's going to share this evening the annual report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here today, and I think I have some really great news to share with you again. I have to tell you, I did add some slides because Jim pointed out to me that not everyone has had the sheer pleasure of hearing me talk to you. So stepping back a little bit, I just wanted to introduce myself. I am a mechanical engineer, and I have specialized in energy analysis, and unfortunately, I've been doing that since the late 1980s, or fortunately, but it's been a long time. I started with the state of Minnesota, doing energy analysis there and working with schools. I started my own company in the mid-'90s, and I've been working with this district since the mid-2000s, so it's been a few years. So this time, I decided to give you a report that is based on information that is given by the Minnesota B3 Program. It's a state program. We input your data into it, and then this will tell you what those outcomes are. One of them, one of my goals today is just to answer the question that you may have of, how are we doing, or how do we compare to other districts in our area? And hopefully, by the end of the night, you'll have an answer to that question. And then also, where do we go from here? What more can we do? So the B3 Program, it stands for the Buildings Benchmark and Beyond. I always call it baseline benchmarking and beyond, but it's buildings. And it's based on different metrics for you to look at, one of which is baseline, and a baseline is defined as a building compared to itself over time. So you're not comparing, you know, Twin Oaks to another school. You're comparing it to itself just over time. And then there's a benchmark, and that is, it's an engineering model that the state uses, the state energy code, and says, if you had built this building now to the model energy code, which is not the best that you can do, that's the least that you can do, this is how much your building would be using. So you're taking your buildings and comparing it to that, even though most of them are older. And then there's Energy Star, which is a federal program where you can see how your buildings are doing compared to the national. And this one is in your packet, but I realized it's very small and hard to read, so I decided to break it apart a little bit for you so you could follow along a little better. I'm going to start with baseline information. And right now, that report is showing that you have reduced your, from your baseline, almost 19% district-wide, so very substantial number. And that is from the baseline year of 2013-14, which was selected based on before you went into any of your big projects that you did, so that we could monitor the impact of that. So this first chart here is district energy use by square footage since 2013, since actually July of 2012 through this year. The last couple of dots on there, we don't have all the data yet for December and January, so those are showing a real low energy use, but... So this is straight numbers, nothing done to it. It's just your utility use, straight from your utility bills. What I like to point out is, it's very clear to me, looking at this, there is a definite downward trend. Just quick analyzing and looking at it, not knowing anything about weather or other impacts. So as I said, we established the baseline based on that first bump up, which is the 2012-2013 year. And then that information is carried forward in the little white squares. So it takes that year and moves it forward, so you can compare yourself to what you were doing had you done nothing. That's how much you would have used. Okay? Clearly, the district is substantially below that line. Whenever you're below the line, you're saving energy and in turn, dollars. So it's significant reduction. That's where you're seeing that 18, almost 19%. The next graph is your benchmark. Now, this is the model energy code. Very clearly, when you get to the end of this, looking at last year, 2021, it's showing a substantial decrease below that code line. This, I mean, I don't, I deal with this every day, so I see this a lot, and I work with a lot of schools. And this is truly amazing numbers that you guys have. I'd have to step back and say that, you know, Jim and Maureen have done a wonderful job, along with all of the guys and girls in the district working on this. It's amazing, and next couple of slides will show that, too. Let me know if I missed anything, okay? All right, so the last metric I wanted to share, well, not the last last, but this is Energy Star. This is the national. So you're taking all of the buildings that you have and comparing them to all of them in the United States, seeing how you do. Anything above 75, which means it's ranked in the top 25 percentile, is ranked high enough to achieve the Energy Star logo. And we've done it a number of times where we've gone and actually received the plaques, but, I mean, you could have 14 of them at this point at each side, I think. The only building that does not rank high enough is this one. And as a bowling alley, you know? Only so much you can do, though. I was looking at it, and it actually has improved, but it's still a bowling alley, so... The highest-ranked building is Greenwood at 96. I mean, 96 is just an amazing score, so...
That's amazing.
You sure can.
So Greenwood is notable because, as we went through construction last year, we changed the ventilation system. It was a poor-performing school, or poorer, but now it's our highest. So the work that went into the design was really impactful.
I mean, your high school is at 95, which is, you know, that's a huge building, and to have it ranked up at 95 compared nationally, it's an amazing feat, and you guys should be very proud of yourselves. So we've looked at how you guys compare, how you compare nationally, then I decided, let's look at how you compare to other school districts in your area. So within the B3 Program, there's a public area where you can look at reports, and this is coming directly from that section. So you select the public schools, and then I went and said, okay, I only want to look at districts that have their data complete up until the last year. There's a lot of buildings in there have one-year data back in 2010 or something, so we don't want to compare ourselves to those. We want those that are up to date with their energy use. And then I just grabbed the ones that are kind of in your million-dollar, million-dollar, million square feet or more, just so you're comparing yourself to more than someone who has one building. So this is the outcome of that. Now, I will point out, the number nine, that is actually where you rank for the state, is ninth. As far as the rest of the building districts, you guys are, of course, the lowest energy users, which is amazing. You're at 41 BTUs per square foot, which is generally how we compare one building to another as we look at that number. Osseo is at 56. Burnsville is at 60. Minnetonka's at 65. Ian Prairie's at 75. So you guys are substantially lower than those districts around you. Edina's at 68, and then there's Stillwater, it's kind of over on the other side, but they're at 105. So you guys are almost three times lower than they are. And they are working at it. Every one of these districts are working to lower their numbers, and a number of these I do work with, and I'm the one that's inputting their data, so I believe their data. Burnsville has really been trying over the years, and they're slowly bringing their numbers down, but, you know, you guys are definitely tops in the lead. Now, if you have a sense of how you rank or how you compare to other districts, to yourselves over time, and to the energy code, and my second thing I wanted to answer is, where do we go from here? So looking at costs for the district, this last year, you spent $1.4 million on utilities. That, this includes water, irrigation, all of that is included. And the yellow part on this is your electric use cost, and it's 65, almost 65% of your total utility bill. Overall, as far as energy use, it's less than gas, but it costs so much more. So anytime you can reduce your electrical use, you're going to save money. And there's two parts to an electric bill. There's the energy use over time, your kilowatt-hours, and that's what you usually see on your home bills. And then for larger buildings, you have that demand, which is your instantaneous use of energy at a given point in time. So I like to look at it as a parking meter, and as, when they reset your meter, when they start to read for the month, it just kind of ticks along, and as you add more equipment, you turn more on at one time, it edges up. And then at the end of the month, they come back out and read it. Now, they just electronically do this, but wherever it peaked, that's your highest point for the month. It doesn't go back down until they reset it. Quick understanding of what demand is. So those are the two parts. Demand is a higher part of your bill, so the more you can do with demand, the more money you're going to save. Now, I do apologize for the horrendous color choice, but some days...
It looks good on you, Julie.
Actually, it does. It matches. Not you, Julie. So this is one month of data, so a billing period, 30 days. This happens to be for June back in 2007, because that's the last time I did a graph of this. But this is data that you guys have access to now that your buildings are fully automated. Someone can take the time and capture this, and then they need to then follow along and really analyze what it's telling you. Now, in this instance, it's June, and the peak was actually set on June 1st, the very first day, at noon. The rest of the month, you then paid for that point. So if someone had to shut something off a little sooner or waited a little longer, your month of June would have cost about, I think it was like $250 less. Now, this building happens to be on Excel. Excel is a little bit more expensive when it comes to demand as opposed to Minnesota Valley, so you have to pay attention to which utility you're on at any one of your sites. You have a few that are in Minnesota Valley. So that's your first thing, reduce that peak any way you can, monitoring when equipment's coming on. It tends to be when the kitchen staff is going, because they have their, all their equipment running, and the minute the dishwasher kicks in, that's usually when your peak is set. Now, this was, I think, before you guys did a lot of the morning breakfast meals, so this tends to show more of the peak during the noon hours. I took and brought this down to just one week, so every one of the little blips is a day, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Friday, clearly, an early release day, and we believe it's because it was graduation. But just standing back and looking at this data, you can really kind of get a sense of your building. You don't have to be engrossed in this for 30 years to kind of get a sense of some of it. But what I start to look at is some of the other points in time when it is not necessarily the peak. One of the things that jumps out at me is you see a lot of, at the lower end, bumping, it's just jumping up and down and up and down, and that's telling me at this point in time, a piece of equipment was probably cycling on and off. And if you guys had the time to dig into this, someone could have said, hey, wait a minute, there's something going on. Let's go investigate and figure out what that was, and either figure out what was wrong with that piece of equipment, or figure out why it's turning on like that. And there's money saved by doing that. So it's just taking the time to look at this information and figure out what's going on with the building. This is just one day. This is the Thursday, and there are just some funny peaks that pop up. So 7:15 in the morning, it jumped way up, and it's, then it drops right back down again, so clearly, something very large got turned on, cooling perhaps. But also, you can see it about 9:15, and I'm guessing that was when the kitchen staff came in and started turning on the equipment. So that's another part of this, is you can really work with your kitchen and figure out ways to reduce their impact on your energy cost. I actually had a district that set up a cheat sheet saying, okay, if you're going to have this meal this day, this is when you turn on this piece of equipment. And they just followed that, and then it really helped them reduce their energy cost. They actually were in an area that had much higher demand charges than you have, so it was very cost-effective for them. So that was energy, very quickly. Any questions?
Comments or questions?
I wowed him with my brilliance.
Margaret, thank you. You make it so easy to understand something that can be so complex and how we can make a difference, and I also want to, want to thank you for all the advice you've given, and Jim and Maureen, to you and your team, to hear these exceptional reports. I know that doesn't come easily. I know you take it seriously, and please pass that along. We're grateful that these are outstanding results. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we are going to have a report on the proposed 2022-23 Kids Company rates and model changes, and we are going to have Kids Company Coordinator Kristy Godette and Director of Community Education Leann Wyrock.
Good evening. In your board packets, there should be a document that shows you what the current rates are for Kids Company for this school year, and also a document that has the proposed model changes and the fees. And I have Kristy Godette here, who will help to share what those changes are.
Good evening. On one side of your document, we've described what we're currently doing at Kids Company, and on the left side and on the right side, we have the proposals laid out. We are changing our model from, we have a pick-your-day schedule for our summer program and our preschool program, and for our school year program, we have an option for parents where they can choose a consistent schedule or a pick-your-day option. Our pick-your-day option is really, really flexible for parents. We have drop-in availability for parents, and so our attendance fluctuates a lot through the week, through the year, through the day at preschool. It'll go up and down depending on what's going on that day for kids, when they're going to classes. So in order to address some of those challenges, the proposal for our model is moving to more of a consistent schedule, still with flexibility, where parents can choose a two-day, a three-day, or a five-day option. And so that's a little bit about our model change. Our fee change is within the five-day, three-day, and two-day options. It's a tiered model so that the less days you choose, the more the fee goes up to sort of balance some of those. Make sure that we're being fiscally responsible and can cover some staffing costs and some other costs associated with attendance. Anything else? Any...
Sure.
Yeah.
Tell them about the, that you did the fee study with the different ranges and how it was variable.
Yes. So we looked at lots of districts to see what they were doing, and within community ed, it's pretty exciting because everybody has a lot of ideas, and they do it very differently. And so to do a fee study, we tried to put a table together that would show you what everybody charges for exactly what we charge, and it was really quite impossible to do based on what everyone's doing, and it's great. It's a creative group of folks, so we just put a fee range on this.
Is that on there?
It is. The industry comparison is our fee range, and that depends a lot on a lot of different factors. But yeah, the other thing that I should mention is that for our school year, we did lower our rates comparatively with our, like, our shorter sides of the day versus our longer sides. We changed that up. Now, we charge the same for both sides of the day, and we changed that a little bit, adjusted that.
And we also had several meetings to get input from administrators and staff here, and Julie Sink, our Executive Director of Business, and she led a process to understand what the current model was, as well as listening to the feedback from Kids Company staff of what they were learning about other models. So in the industry, in the Southwest Metro Community Ed Group right now, they're all, they're sending out emails of how people are doing their preschool model as well, because the block scheduling isn't really working for figuring out the staffing. Okay. Do you have anything else you want to add? Do you have any questions or comments?
Anybody want, Mary?
A couple of questions here. So the registration fee went from $40 to $75, and the one one says $40 per account versus $75 per contract. Should you explain that?
Sure. So what we do now is we charge per family, a registration fee per family, and we're moving to charge a registration per participant. So that is a change. We looked at a lot of programs. Most programs have $100 registration fee that we looked at currently, and it's per student versus per family for most programs, so...
So if you had three children, you would pay a registration fee, which includes, you know, processing fees and so on for each child?
So if you had three children, do you fill out one contract then, or is it three contracts?
It's three contracts.
Three contracts. Okay. And before, it would have been one account per family with three kids?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So that is quite an increase for families.
I think the deposit, though, was removed.
Oh, yes. We also used to do a deposit where families would pay an additional amount to hold their spot, and then that would go toward their balance. So when they registered, they did pay a lot upfront to participate. They'd pay a deposit and a registration fee, and we're not doing the deposit anymore.
Okay.
And our registration fees have really stayed the same for quite a long time, for many years, so I don't have that data, but I could get that.
I have another question, if that's okay. So if I have, you know, if I was going to be registering my kids, and you have a three, a five, a three, and a two-day schedule, is that for the whole summer itself, or is that, can that vary by week or by program or something like that?
That would be, you would register for that for the whole summer, so it wouldn't change. There wouldn't be any real flexibility in that, just that you would be able to pick a two-day, three-day, or a five-day consistently.
Didn't you have contracts that people enrolled?
Yes.
And they weren't using the program?
Right. We would have, we had a handful, well, more than a handful of contracts that we have currently for our school year, and with our pick-your-day schedule, we have families who have never come to us before, and we had about 50 families who have come to us less than five days this year. So we have a lot of families that, I think this is what I've gleaned from the site leaders who work with the families, is that a lot of people are waiting to go back to work. They might be working from home, so they've just had a contract holding their spot. But with pick-your-day, they wouldn't have to really participate until they needed to activate that, so I don't know if that answers your question.
And the reason, if I could just jump in here for just a second, and the reason that that's a struggle is because we're staffing based on those contracts. And so that's what makes it very difficult for us to cover those costs, so that's the reason why we're looking at a different model.
No, and I get that. That makes a lot of sense. I'm just thinking about the, you know, families on a schedule, and schedules change, and before, I understand that, you know, pick-your-day was, you pay when you, when you show up, which I get, you know, staffing is nowhere near manageable that way. I'm just thinking that $75 per kid, and then pre-pick the three or the two days that you go, and the parent's schedule changed. Do they have an option to call up and...
Oh, they could... Oh, they could they could change their schedule.
Okay.
Right now for school year, we have a you have to have your schedule for a minimum of 20 days. We do right now have consistent and pick your day schedules for the school year. And we do have more consistent. I was trying to find it. I think I have it in my folder. We do have more consistent schedules than we do pick your day. So that's a good that tells us that people like that option. And the only difference for fees right now between those two options is $1 per session. So it's not like they're paying a ton more per session or anything. But I think families, some of them really like the consistency. They don't have to go in there, you know, go into the software and update their attendance or anything. So.
Jonathan?
I met with Leann and Kristy last week to kind of walk through all of this. I think for background, it's will be helpful probably just to know the why this is being done is because the program had a significant shortfall. We had issues, right? And so we really needed to look at a different model to make sure that we keep that program solvent. It is. And it is, as Julie mentioned, it was also driven by the fact that we need to have it properly staffed on a day to day basis. And when when mom or dad has an opportunity at 10 o'clock in the morning for a friend to call and say, let's go get a cup of coffee and they can just decide they're going to drop their child off, it creates basically just an impossible task to be able to be properly staffed. So that's really there were two objectives, I think, managing the staffing and getting financially more stable going forward is what was going on.
We have the same challenges that a lot of other school age care programs have and districts have with staffing and with subbing. So it would be nice to have a better handle on who is participating that day. Also, it helps us schedule for students who have special needs if they need to have.
Accommodation.
Yeah, accommodations. We need some staff to help with that that are trained. So also thinking about that.
No, I understand we haven't changed our rates in quite some time and we just started up upping them to be the the average.
Can I go ahead and see if anybody else would like to speak since you've had a few questions? Enrique?
Yeah, I do. Yeah. So thank you very much for doing the the fee study. I'm curious, was like racial equity impact analysis or an economic impact analysis performed along with that? Because I'm curious about the change in the cost and the fees, how that might impact our existing community. My fear is that we might pry some people out.
Currently, we are not an accredited program. And with that is that allows families to access Scott County funds to help. So we are moving toward accreditation. I would really like to be accredited. Right now, it's not possible because of COVID. They're not doing accreditation. But as soon as that becomes available, I that's a goal of mine is to get that set up for families who need to access those monies. One thing that I can tell you that I do as a coordinator is I do work with people who are struggling and we try to come up with a payment plan that works for them. And I've just tried to make it really personal about reaching out if people are struggling and try to work with them. We don't have anything that's specifically formal or anything, but that's just been my approach.
And I I do appreciate your question. And I think that when you think of Kids Company, it's primarily fee based. And so just like other businesses in the community, we were hit pretty hard with COVID and, you know, just other, you know, we did the free childcare. We did get some money from, I don't remember Julie, it's Scott County. We had some two Scott County gave us some because they got childcare money and then was it?
There was a lot of COVID funds that were spent last year on childcare or Kids Company.
Tier one.
Staffing, tier one childcare, correct?
And then just thinking about our audit and our year end last year and trying to figure out how not to go in the red, basically, too. So.
One additional question. I'm curious if community voice was represented in any of the conversations, just to see what that affordability cost looks like or what that breakpoint is for families that are already engaged in the programs.
Did you? We did not seek any input from parents, mostly just from the administration, looking at finances, just internally, looking at the budget overall.
I think that what one of the issues that we have, we're not accredited. So and even we don't have a way of providing those funds to someone at this point. As soon as we can become accredited, I believe that that would be an important piece of that.
Sure.
But otherwise, really what this is is trying to cover the costs of our staffing and our costs for the program. And so that's why they have the industry comparison in there because it really is about making sure that we are offering something that people can afford, but and we're not out of the range of our competitors. And so we're trying to cover the costs in the district while still being very competitive in the community.
Amy? Any questions?
No, thank you.
Julie? No? Okay, Mary?
Now, we're raising these rates and could you help me understand, let's say, the summer program when there's field trips and things like that? Is that a cost that's passed in addition to?
We talked about that with Julie Sink as well because we need to figure out also how to market and package it because we had some field trips that didn't occur, obviously with COVID. We had to cancel those. And then last summer, we were a little shy about doing it. So we had funding, you know, that the parent fees pay for to bring in the Three Rivers Park District or others to come in and do activities. And we also had themes. This year, Kristy and her staff, was it? I'll let you bring and it's included in the.
It is. It's included in the fees. And a lot of places still aren't taking reservations that we went to before. And a lot of our the places that we visited before are museums that are starting their own programs, too. So that's a challenge in and of itself. But we are planning programs for students that will be rising fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. And we're going to really try hard to build some really exciting themes and things for students to do on site in those younger grades. And like Leann said, bring people in to do some activities with them. And it's, I think, for me to, as the coordinator, it's hard to really figure out what the temperature is of people and how much they really want to send their kids out and how much they want to keep them close to home. So we're also trying to to make them shorter field trips, closer to home, give some parents some flexibility in whether they want to participate in that or not. But we do have weekly field trips for the majority of the summer planned for four, rising fourth, fifth, and sixth.
One of my questions is, builds upon that, when you said it's included. Did these fee increases also anticipate rising transportation costs, utilities? So that was included in here? Okay.
And fees, you know, the supply chain, food. We have a certain budget assumptions, as you do, that we use our parameters for staff, percent increase, health insurance, you know, all those.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. I'll just ask, too. It sounds like accreditation might be something that would work in in several people's favor. I assume that's a major undertaking.
Oh, they you worked on it before. Go ahead.
Oh, sure. So they made the.
DHS.
Yes, DHS. Thank you, Leann.
Department of Human Services or Health?
Yes, Health and Human Services, I think. They connected accreditation to the Scott County or to the county funding. So we weren't for a long time accredited. When that happened, we did become accredited for a while. And then they made some more changes and we couldn't meet that criteria. So we took a break from that to kind of see what happened, let the dust settle, and then COVID. So that's kind of how we we were accredited. Things changed. We lost our accreditation, but we will work to get it back. So.
So the reason I told you that is that, yes, it is a huge process and the files that we currently have from what they needed to do to become accredited, it would just be a whole process to update. And they require fingerprinting of all staff. And there was controversy on how they were going to implement that. So it's kind of like getting a here's what you can do, but we're not going to tell you how to do it. And there's no funding really attached to it. And we're going to take away the county assistance if you don't have this. And now they don't have the training available. So we're we're trying.
Many layers. Well, thank you for your efforts. I appreciate it. And just so I'm clear, does this need to come forward for a vote or are we? Is this a report? Okay.
This is a report. But I would like to say that our program is it is a really good program for our parents before and after school during the summertime. We offer some great services through Kids Company. So they do have an excellent program for our families in this community.
I continually hear that feedback as well.
And early release days, non school days. So we think will it'll still be a affordable option for our families. Thank you.
Thank you for all you've done. And I know it's been an extra hard year or two in your department, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael?
Yes.
Can I just add one?
Please do.
Quick note?
Yes.
Leann?
Oh.
Come back up here. I don't know if I want to accept your retirement.
This is not part of this.
But it's not part of it. But if for those who don't know, after 32 years.
32 years.
Leann will be retiring this spring and just announce that this year.
Thank you for all you've done. You. Thank you.
All right. We appreciate all of that. Now we are moving on under strategic direction number one. We are going to have a two pronged approach report, first on instructional excellence and then on MTSS. And our presenters will include Dan Edwards, Emily Rosengren, Caroline Warner, and then Chrislyn Goodman and Chad Thorpe.
All right. Thank the Chair Nelson and members of the Board, Dr. Stallow. We are here tonight to provide you with an update on two components of strategic direction one. And again, referring to our strategic plan, this is where this falls, our first and foremost strategic direction around increasing measurable student achievement. And we have some parts of that that we want to present to you tonight. This particular strategic direction has three subparts to it. And I want to remind you that back in December, you received an update on one of those areas, specifically the educational equity and excellence. Our counterpart, Sam Oak, provided in his team an update at our December meeting. And with that in mind, as we are looking into our midyear update here, we felt it important to bring these other two components of that in one presentation together. So that is what we are here to do tonight, speaking about instructional excellence and MTSS. So as a reminder, we have, as part of our strategic plan work and implementation, we have core committees. The people listed here are the administrative representation from our learning leader group. That includes directors and assistant directors as well as principals and assistant principals from across the district. So that is our team that has been providing the leadership in each of these areas. And as you know, we believe strongly in shared leadership. And in addition to those administrative positions that you saw on the previous slide, we also have a number of teams that support this work. We have, for example, a number of teacher on special assignment positions such as our tech integrationists and our curriculum specialists, gifted and talented specialists, peer coaches. And then when we get to the site level, we also have built teams that support our each of our respective building leaders. And again, built stands for building instructional leadership team. And they are crucial members of each of our sites in providing support and direction. And then getting it down even further to the teaching level, we have learning team leaders who lead their colleagues in this work as well. We also have new this year and let Chrislyn Goodman speak to that a little bit later here, but we have an MTSS leadership team as well that supports the shared leadership that we do to make sure that our strategic directions come to fruition. So I'm going to turn it over to one member of our team, Caroline Warner, Dr. Warner, Principal at Westwood Elementary, to talk about specific focuses in instructional excellence.
Good evening. Thank you. One of the things that Chad and I will share is just some highlights of our current work that aligns with our strategic plan that guides our system. Sorry. To create that learning experience for all of our students that's personalized, purposeful, and empowering. So you can see a couple of the areas of focus. I'm just going to highlight a few of those things so that you have a little more context to what that is. So one of the examples of the work that we're doing is through our math talks and that's with our kindergarten through eighth grade. So we have had the opportunity in October 25th at a professional development day with our K five teachers and then our six through eight math teachers to be able to really focus in on a math talk training. And so math talks are a teacher led, student centered technique that really helps our students talk and ensure that they really are understanding the math that they're learning. And it really helps us as teachers to be able to help next plan that instructional moment for them. And then also, one of the things with those math talks, we've had that opportunity with our consultant to be able to have that coaching experience as well as have that time with our teams. And that has just been valuable, again, for that planning forward as well as the reflecting where we're at. Another example was our foundation. So that is our the foundations are part of our phonics program. And so that is something that's part of our kindergarten through second grade currently. And then we'll actually move into our third grade next year. And that foundations program is a multi sensory and systematic phonics, spelling, and handwriting program that benefits all of our K through two students and, like I said, that K through three. And we've seen great opportunity for our students to be able to really use those skills and watching a five year old be able to use the skills to be able to take apart words and put them together has really been powerful this year, too. And then in our science implementation, that's a K 12 focus that we have. And so we have our new science standards that are being implemented and that has a you know, at our various stages across the school district. That's really dependent on the level as well as the alignment with our Minnesota Department of Ed implementation timeline. So that looks like our new standards are calling for that pedagogical shift and that focus on inquiry. So it really is shifting how students are thinking about that science, again, not from following the steps of things, but really thinking how and why are things happening? And so even in our kindergarten and third grade, we're doing some of those specific pilot units. And then at secondary, that focus is really on the teacher training and preparation for beginning that implementation in that 2223 school year. And then last two things, school continuous improvement plan. So what we look at at the site level is really how are we looking at continuing all of the work that's going on and really connecting those pieces together? It's analyzing our data to determine what additional supports are needed and all of those pieces that really keep the thread going at that site level, at that specific student level. And then then the last one that I know we had highlighted here are that is that program review. So currently, we have a representative committee that's begun work on our gifted education program review. And the work to date has included analyzing some current trends in gifted education, a review of our district data, and then related current programming, and then developing that feedback process to gain additional stakeholder input from our students, parents, and staff so that we really can make sure that we're planning for those needs. And I'll pass it on to Chad for some MTSS focus areas.
Good evening. Chad Thorpe, Assistant Principal at the high school. A brief update on MTSS, our leadership team. First, our problem solving teams or PSTs at each level have received training from the Carey Institute at the U of M. Along with that, training includes personal visits from them and they give observations and feedback from each of us. The leadership team itself, we meet once a month right now. We have representatives from each level. Part of our work is is to provide as much stakeholder input as we can and then provide guidance as a team. Recently, we received information on student data from the fall. We reviewed that as a team, moved that forward to the learning leaders, but also to our individual builds at each building. Next step that we're looking at is trying to identify a data system that's going to allow us to read that data as quick as possible and move it to the end users who are teachers and school administrators. Finally, the implementation of Title I and AdSIS program is a recommendation from last year's leadership team that we're moving forward right now.
And then I just wanted to share just the opportunity that each of us gets at the building to be able to share where we're at midyear because it's important to think about where we're going, but also to take. because it's important to think about where we're going, but also to take that check mid-year where we where we are so that we can plan forward and also celebrate the things that are working really well. So one way we look at that effectiveness is that in the strategic directions is through that mid-year review in those five areas of reading, math, science, social emotional learning, and equity. New this year and speaking personally, it was a great opportunity to be able to have Dr. Stallow and all of our directors help really, for me, guide that connectedness of all of that work and continue to be able to make sure that all of that fits together. And we have those opportunities. And then each of our sites are looking at that data, those shared strategies, and then looking at what's in place to support our increased journey. Excuse me, increased student learning and our growth.
All right. And as Caroline was talking about the mid-year meetings that we had and looking at the five different areas that there was feedback and conversation around, one of those areas, or actually two of them, so math and reading, are something that can be looked at in terms of using the FastBridge data. So FastBridge, I'm sure you're familiar with already. We look at that in fall, winter, and spring. And it's given K-eight. It's a universal screener. And we get information about student skills. And these are the skills that students need to be able to access content at grade level. So it is not the MCA, nor is it like the MCA. But it can help us anticipate some NCA results because it tells us about the skills that students need to be able to get to that content, to master the content, to show that they've done that on the MCA. All right. So I'm going to be showing you some of the winter results from FastBridge. And I want to use this slide to disorient you to what you're going to be seeing. So you can see a horizontal line that's a little bit darker across the middle. And that is what we call the benchmark. So that's the point that we want students to get to. If the scores are above that line, that's showing us that they're at low risk of not being at grade level by the end of the school year or on track. And then below that line, we have the group of students whose scores fall in the some risk category. That's a group that's actually really narrow. We can't tell or can't determine from their scores mathematically if they're going to be at grade level by the end of the school year or not. So they have like a fifty-fifty chance of if they were to take the MC at the end of the school year, scoring in the meets or the partially meets category. And then we've got another risk level, high risk. So students that have scores in this level are at high risk of not being at grade level by the end of the school year without some significant support. Okay, so you will also see these two columns next to each other. The one on the left will always be the fall of twenty-twenty-one, and then the one on the right is the winter. So if we look at this particular one, this is from early reading English. Early reading is the assessment that kindergartners and first graders get. It's those very, very basic reading schools, like with letter names, letter sounds. And we can see from this that in the fall, fifty-six percent of our learners were in a low-risk category. And now in winter, we've got sixty-one percent of them that have moved there. And so we shifted about or we shifted by five percentage points. And so that's telling us that our instruction is being more effective. Students are making gains. And if we look below at the some risk and high-risk groups, we can see that the proportion of high-risk students stayed about the same from fall to winter. And so we always want to see that group getting smaller. So although the proportion of students in some risk and high risk combined was lower, we'd like to see the high-risk group getting even smaller. Do you have any questions right now before I go forward? Okay, so I'm going to be showing you the early reading English, early math, early reading Spanish. And then I'll be showing you the assessment that we use in grades two through eight in math and two through eight in reading.
Chrislyn?
Yes.
Can you just clarify when you're saying the early reading English and the early reading Spanish?
Yes.
Elaborate.
Yes, because the Olav del Lago, the instruction is in Spanish. And so we test there in winter exclusively in Spanish.
Okay.
Yes.
I assumed that? I didn't?
And then that's in kindergarten. In grade one, we test in fall in Spanish as well.
Okay.
Okay, so looking just at early reading English district-wide from fall to winter, I just went through those. So we will move and we can see a little bit further into that change. So you can see on the left of your screen kindergarten and then first grade. And both groups made very similar gains between fall and winter. There's not a lot of other description I would give there other than that really mirrors what was happening. So if I want to drill down even further, I might go building by building to find more variation. All right, then, looking at early reading Spanish. So on the far left, you see overall from fall to winter. And then in the middle is just winter for kindergarten because the kindergartners test in English in fall. And then you can see in first grade from fall to winter, there was a lot of improvement that was made. So that's a really exciting time in kindergarten and first grade. And we do expect the learning to have that kind of dynamic at that point in time. All right, moving on to early math. So this is again kindergarten and first grade. We did not see a lot of change between fall and winter, but we did see a little bit. So that's always positive. If we break it down by grade level between kindergarten and first grade, we did see more dynamic growth in kindergarten than first grade. And we also saw what I was alluding to in that first screen or that first visualization where the proportion of students who are in the high-risk category shrunk drastically from fall to winter in kindergarten. That's always what we're looking for. Moving on to A reading, so this is the screener taken in grades two through eight. We did not have much change. That was very stable from fall to winter. And then I'm bringing up two cases where the where the change was the most dynamic. So in second grade, change from fifty-nine percent to sixty-five percent. And then in eighth grade, four percentage point change. That is especially exciting because normally the further along students are in their educational career, the less change there is between fall and winter, especially in reading skills. So this is really great news that we're seeing our eighth graders make progress like that, too. Then looking at math, district-wide, we did not see much change. And breaking things down, looking at some grade levels where there was change. Again, second grade went up by eight percentage points, so that is super. But we did also see two places where from fall to winter, we had a decline. And that was in sixth grade and in eighth grade.
Chrislyn, do you?
Yes.
Have any idea why that you think there was a decrease in sixth and eighth grade?
Not yet. I'll have to investigate further on that. One thing with middle school is that the assessments were given differently than they might otherwise be. We had six days of distance learning, which is also a great moment to do a test like the FastBridge because it can be taken online. But it meant then that the standardization of the test wasn't quite the same. So it can be students clicking through. It can be representative of student skill learning or not. But yeah, so many factors involved would need deeper analysis.
In the fall, when you when you give this test, do you give it in the first week of school, the third week of school?
There's actually a window because it takes a long time to have all of the grades move through. Like we have bandwidth that we have to stay within. So we have about a four, five-week window or so in the fall. All right. So to conclude, what I did was I looked at what MCA proficiency looked like last year. And then based on what the FastBridge results were currently, what kind of a forecasted capacity we may have. So I use that kind of wording because using FastBridge results to forecast what might happen on the MCA, again, isn't it's not a one-to-one ratio. So like although it has a great correlation coefficient, point eight, it's really strong. FastBridge is just telling us about the skills that students have. It's not telling us about content or standards that they have achieved. So last year, just looking at only grades three through eight, we had a fifty-seven percent proficiency rate on the MCA. And the FastBridge data is currently telling us that our capacity is around seventy-six percent. And then for reading, last year in grades three through eight, that MCA proficiency rate was at fifty-nine percent. And looking at those winter FastBridge scores, it's looking that we're at like a seventy-three percent capacity for that meets and exceeds. Yes.
I know last year we talked a lot about the difference between what how FastBridge tests and how the MCA's tests.
Yes.
And also the MTSS and MCA. And I think that if I remember correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, but on the MCA's in general, didn't we have a less less participation on them?
That is correct. So we, in prior years, had had very high participation, like in the ninety-eight percent of eligible students were taking it. And then in twenty-twenty-one, it was seventy-five percent in reading and seventy-seven in math or the other way around. So much fewer students took it than normal.
Are we anticipating a larger percentage participation rate this year just because we're in school?
That is my hope.
Do you want questions on this first part before going to the second part?
Sure.
Is that better?
And this is the end.
Oh, of everything. It's both sides. I thought there was, okay, I had it broken down.
Yes, we have integrated both of those because all of these academic skills, you know, in tier one.
I'm too tied to my agenda with two bolded sections. I apologize. So then I will ask for other questions and comments at this time. Thank you.
I have a question about the science curriculum, particularly at the high school. Is is there a change coming next year for the order that the kids would traditionally take, like earth science in ninth and?
No, no, no content change, pedagogical change there. At the middle school level, there will be the beginning of a three-year implementation of a content shift as well as the pedagogical shift, inquiry-based approach.
And what is that? What is that?
So next year's sixth graders will be getting earth science where currently and traditionally historically, eighth graders have gotten that. So that'll life science will remain in the seventh grade into the future. And then the current next year's sixth graders, when they get to eighth grade, will get physical science.
Okay.
So it's a three-year phasing approach. Thank you.
Comments or questions over here? Anybody over here? Mary?
So I have a question with the concept of math interventionists and and math talks. Because I know that we haven't had, or at least I don't think we've had, math interventionists. Is there is this kind of a help me understand how math talks is going to help with that lack of intervention?
The training that we've gotten from math talks is for that individual classroom teacher, K-five, sixth through eighth grade, to be able to really design that next conversation, to really draw out where are students at with their learning, and then to help them articulate to then help us plan the next piece. So it really is, you know, a class-wide, as well as what, you know, our consultant has talked with us. How do I specifically do things for small groups of students? So like the support that would be more from that intervention side would be the helpfulness that the teams will now have to say, all right, these are the students that need this specific because we're not hearing these pieces from our math talk. And this is the next, you know, articulated math talk that we should do with this either small group or with all of our students based on that data. So it really is, it's a combined approach to that, but it's a, you know, class-wide intervention with that. But then the opportunity with that coaching we've had was our teams to be able to then plan for those small groups of students to see where those levels are at.
Okay, so when does the math talks actually start? Are they already starting or do they?
They have been. Yep, teachers have been implementing those. Some of them are every day. Some of them are three times a week. We're just really exploring those pieces specifically, again, to the targeted of what our students are needing. And so that's that professional development that teachers are getting right now. But it was one of those professional development opportunities that are the next day. Teachers were trying things in their classrooms, and I was able to walk through to see students talking about their math in different ways. And then teachers talking to each other about how to instruct math in different ways with just that little bit of an opportunity to ask the question differently and then step back and have students do more of that talking and reflecting. And then us learn and plan forward from that.
I'll add to that, that I was in the curriculum committee meeting when when we had elementary teachers in there talking about it and their experiences with listening to kids who had never thought about math in that way instead of just looking at math through a different lens or learning something from a friend. And it was that was powerful to hear those stories from teachers.
Yeah, and I thank you for bringing that up. I was going to remind folks that we had that conversation at District Curriculum Advisory Meeting in December. And you may recall that also at that time, we had an aha moment because similarly, when I speak of the pedagogical shift in science instruction, it's really into that inquiry-based, getting kids to think about how they're thinking about science. So teachers were drawing that parallel on the committee. And actually, our our science teacher rep on that committee, who was an eighth-grade science teacher, was talking about it. It came to her mind at that point, said, oh, that explains how my students were approaching a lesson that we were just having last week because they were using that way of thinking that they've been exposed to in their math classroom, in their science classroom. So.
Thank you. We have one. Jonathan?
Yeah, real quickly, I mean, it's encouraging, right? All those numbers seem to be getting better from fall to now, and that's what we want to see. I realize this would be speculation for anybody who wants to step up and answer. But do we have anybody want to try to attribute it to what, you know, what's leading to it?
I'm just going to be the first person to step up. I'm sure many others can. I would say like we did see some nice improvement in kindergarten and second grade especially. And those are grades where foundations has been introduced this year. And so one of my hypotheses is that foundations is really helping students make improvements faster. I tested some students myself, and it was really interesting. Like I was saying, that window was about four to five weeks, and it was a little bit longer this winter. But just testing kids on the front end of that window, so like the middle of January and then near the end of it in the middle of February, it was really stunning how much change and growth students had been able to make in that short period of time. So that's really a great thing to look forward to and to keep watching those grade levels as those cohorts of students come into third, fourth.
First thing that popped into my head was despite the brief pause when we had to go to distance learning in mid-January, our commitment to in-person learning, I think, is something that our continued commitment has us hopeful that we are going to see stronger results, definitely.
Chrislyn?
Thank you.
One additional thing, you just mentioned the foundations. And now we started a phonics program also even before the pandemic, right?
That is.
Yeah.
Foundations.
But it was, yeah, I know, but we we were talking about the emphasis on phonics even before COVID and before we called it foundations. Now, we had, from what I understand, the reading scores actually greatly improved with that initial move also. I guess it was two years ago, maybe?
We had a pilot group two years ago. Yeah. So if I'm not mistaken, this is the first year of full implementation, right?
Okay.
Second year. Okay, right, right.
Okay.
And moving it into third grade next year is the intent.
Great. All right. I'd just like to add, I want to thank you all for presenting tonight. It is really fun to look at the mid-year data and I know the meetings and working with leaders on the the implementation, right, of best practice of these strategies by our teachers and staff across the district are certainly, Jonathan, back to your question, one of the whys, you know, they have been relentless. They know and are concerned about where students are academically as well as their social emotional learning. And they have done tremendous things across the district to stay really focused on some of those key strategies that we know work with kids. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for the work you've done, for the data you've collected and how you're applying it. And thanks trickle-down, of course, to those frontline staff and the teachers and the support who are implementing all of this. So thank you for that. All right, moving on to the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three program and staffing reductions and additions discussion.
and additions discussion. This will include Executive Director of Human Resources, Jim Querham, and Director of Business Services, Julie Sink.
Good evening, Board Chair, Superintendent Stallow, Board members. When you don't have anything definitive, you talk to process and we're in the middle of that right now. So just a kind of a standing agenda item going forward will be those things related to budget and staffing for next year. As you know, Julie's presented numerous times on the budget piece. We've also been meeting on all the budget requests and how that fits into it, as well as we're beginning all the staffing processes. So as most of you know, we roll all of our numbers forward with real, real student numbers and we're doing that literally as we speak. And the next thing, that's at the elementary level. And once we have that rolled over, we'll also roll over all the programmatic numbers as well, whether that's special ed or EL or some of those what I call the Yabats. There's all those things that we we talk about that are sort of exceptions to the rule. And then we'll wait for secondary to come in with registration. That'll determine elementary level. It's it's a little bit more standardized because everybody is K six or one-six licensed for the most part when we look at classroom teachers. But at the secondary level, there are all kinds of licensures. So depending upon what registration looks like, then we sit down and begin to look at how many FTEs based upon a certain class size average that we want as a target and then work with the principals on what that looks like. So right now, we're waiting on registration at the middle school level. We'll be working elementary numbers in the next few days as far as staffing is concerned. So Julie, what else do you want?
And just a quick update, kindergarten enrollment still is lagging behind where it has been in the past. And so we're just kind of watching that every week and and we'll continue to report that out as we move forward.
Thank you. All right, we will move on then to unless I'm sorry, was there any questions or comments there? I don't want to jump too fast. Moving on to policy, then we're starting our, I believe, first reads of policy, starting with four oh seven would be safety. And that is, Jim, are you presenting on that? Is there Jim Delvo?
No changes.
No changes. Okay. Do we just, do you want me to, since everybody's had a chance to read them, go to the ones that have changes and ask you to present on those? Or you want me to read them off and let me know what's easiest for the people speaking to them? Okay, five oh four, we had a few changes. How about that? Thank you, Dan.
Fair, fair, a couple fairly, what our administrators would consider minor changes in terms of effect and really updating it to what has been in practice in each of the two changes that you see noted there.
Great. Comments or questions for Dan?
I did have a question. How did you come up with the sentence clothing that is not in keeping with community standards?
So that's a great question. That language has been in place for quite some time. And this policy I can speak to has gone through a series of changes over time that I've been a building level administrator in this district, which numbers quite a few years. And as we talked with the administrators, again, who are engaged in enforcement of this policy, it was really that clothing, the standards are ever changing. So the level of specificity and calling out certain articles of clothing creates complications when there's another example, but it's not that specific one. And so the the general statement about, and again, those are, those are difficult, difficult judgment calls, I will say. So we felt that the general statement, that sentence was always in there and we felt that was really the the overarching statement that we needed to remain rather than get into specific specifics. And again, that was coming from our group of building administrators who are working with this on a daily basis.
If I could make a comment, I agree with Julie's. It's a, it's a fairly nebulous statement. It can be kind of confusing for parents and for kids on what a community standard is. And then also then to go down on to number seven on Part C and then to have it up to the discretion of an administrator, meaning that a different administrators could have different, depending on the building, depending on, you know, where they are, it could have different interpretations of it. So it seems to me that even though it's, it seems safer to have more broad language, it could also lead to a lot of confusion and the exact opposite effect that we intend in giving clear direction in this area.
Yep. And I think that the administrators had a lengthy conversation when we reviewed this policy in a look to be aligned with how they do that and what roles, depending on level, for example, of who they work with, different at the high school level versus the middle school level versus the elementary level in terms of the student leadership groups, for example, and defining, working with the kids where age appropriate to help guide that. And so it really, the policy is intended to be overarching and administrators do have to make those decisions and calls and be consistent within their building or within their level. And that was a lot of the conversation we had with the elementary principals, again, the middle school and high schools fairly similar. All those certainly are some minor differences between levels there.
And I think that ongoing collaboration that administrators have with one another helps to build some of that consistency that they may not be spoken to in a policy. But the practice is that, I know, Dan, you and Joe or you and Sasha were constantly talking back and forth in terms of what would be happening at the middle school.
Yep. And and likewise, when we got into this conversation earlier with our principals, we we actually had that in-depth conversation again by level. And generally speaking, the secondary level administrators were very aligned with minor exceptions to that and elementary certainly as well.
What do other schools do in this? I mean, how how aligned are is this policy with other school districts?
Quite aligned. I think when we looked at it, again, interestingly, that statement of community standards, and I realize it's vague and nebulous to an extent. However, those are potentially different from community to community. And that is something that we have to deal with locally here and and interpret and they're changing, you know, styles change, as we've seen. And parents who are purchasing clothing for their children understand that. And I think that's a perspective that administrators understand as well.
So first of all, clothing appropriate for the weather. I am still amazed my own kids did it below zero weather, shorts and a T-shirt, walking from, you know, the extended parking area by the softball field and stuff like that, that distance. And when the weatherman says you could get frostbite in less than two minutes outside, you know, that sort of thing. So there, there's a lot of of language in here that's, that's going to be interesting. But I do agree with the hats. So thank you very much for taking that piece off.
So I was going to ask a question about that. That's all buildings?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And we had, we had lengthy conversation across levels on that. And it was felt that that was the most appropriate and consistent.
My father made me take my hat off to eat dinner. I have a hard time with that one. Little old school.
Yes. And and we certainly had administrators in that category as well.
I would be one of those too.
Showing our age.
I do it often.
All right.
And we did have some student engagement activities here. I know Principal Kuznetsov is at the back. I saw him bouncing around. There he is. So we did have some students from Hidden Oaks that did put together communication for the board.
Sasha, would you mind coming up to the microphone and just speaking to that?
That was a great exercise in community activation and activism as well and supporting.
Yeah, yeah. Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Stallow, we had students who spoke to us. Well, first, they were showing to us what they would like to see happen by wearing hats when we were saying you cannot wear a hat. And she said, well, don't show, tell us. And so we had a meeting with students and I said, one way to do it is you actually write a letter to decision makers, which is the school board, who is the policies and approves policies and get signatures and respectfully wait for the decision. So as a matter of fact, today as we were supervising the crosswalk, a couple of students stopped by and said, today's a school board meeting, right? So they're waiting. They're eagerly waiting of your decision on the hats. So.
Such a great way to empower voice. And and if a different decision's made, there's important lessons in that as well.
Right. And we did tell them that it's not guaranteed, even though they collected a lot of signatures. So, but they're waiting to hear from you.
Democratic process at work. The former social studies teacher loves it, the democratic process at work.
Great. Okay, thank you. I'm just going to go through these one by one. I don't think policy five oh six point three had any changes in it. Policy five two one, I don't believe did either. Student disability, non-discrimination. Did I miss any in there?
I do have some questions.
The comment on that one, that's five twenty-one, right?
Yep, correct.
Yep. That was recently reviewed by legal within the last eighteen months.
Okay.
A comprehensive review of that particular one. So.
Did I hear you voice a question?
Yes, sorry. Yeah. So it kind of ties into both five oh six point three and five twenty-one. It seems like there might be a tie-in. Just kind of curious, at what point a parent or legal guardian might be included in the decision to administer a breathalyzer to a minor child or children? And the reason for my question is there are certain disabilities in which a person might appear intoxicated, multiple sclerosis being one of them, where the individual might slur their speech, walk erratically, have impacted cognition or other things that might give the illusion that they are indeed intoxicated when in fact they are experiencing an exacerbation of their condition. So I guess my thought here is if the parent is engaged earlier on in the process rather than your child was administered a breathalyzer test or refused to take a breathalyzer, come pick up your child, we can turn it into more of a supportive type of an experience?
I'll take an initial response to that with regard to procedurally at the site, at the building level. When these types of decisions are made, it's in consultation often with the health services office, a student that you scenario you might describe in theory would have on file with us in our health services office. We would have knowledge of that health condition. That would be the hope and expectation that that health condition would be known and taken into account would be my initial response to that.
That would be my response too, is, I mean, normally there's a medical plan already. There's some that the student would have. If it was a younger student, I would think that would be surprising and concerning where we would get medical involved right away. If it's an older student, at that point, if they had a chronic condition, we should have a medical plan on on file. And Dan would know better than me, but having been assistant principal, that's the first place that I would go is to see if that was in place. So that doesn't necessarily answer your question directly, but I think it fills in a lot of the gaps of what we would do to minimize that.
The procedural piece would be run through the in consultation with the health office for sure.
Thank you.
Was there more to that, Enrique, or is that?
No, just a lot of words to get around to. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on student disability that you wanted to mention? All right. I don't believe policy six eleven and homeschooling had any changes. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And were there any questions or comments on that? Okay. I do believe there's changes on policy six twelve.
Yes, and I believe it was simply a change in position title.
Yeah, I believe so too. Any comments or questions on policy six twelve?
I had one question that I had highlighted in here and it's not really associated with any one specific policy. It was just the language that was used within a previous policy you just passed by. I was noticing I had it highlighted. And it was the retaliation or reprisal paragraph. It's on page forty-three of policy five twenty-one. And it's not really related necessarily to policy five twenty-one, but in any one of our other policies, that's general language for retaliation or reprisal for action against any student, teacher, administrator or whatever, who retaliates anybody who makes a good faith report. The reason why I'm asking this question is because it's, it's in this policy, but it's, it applies to a lot of the other ones too. Is this language that we repeat or is this, is this, how do we manage this?
I can only speak to like the harassment, some of those policies, that's all laid out in there as well. It talks about no retaliation, no reprisal.
Do we use this exact same language?
I would have to review that. I can't say off the top of my head.
The only reason why I ask that, obviously, if the language is slightly different, we can actually get, you know, it can kind of come back to haunt us a little bit. So and as I was reading through all the policies, I noticed that paragraph in there and it seems like a overriding paragraph that should be kind of a governing area that would be referred to in all the other policies so we can keep our language consistent.
Or we could also, it could be under definitions on policies when that comes up.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Yep. It's overriding language.
Great. Okay, policy six twenty-one point two, academic recognition program. I don't believe I saw changes. Is that correct?
Correct.
And any comments or questions from the board? All right. The pledge of allegiance, policy six two-two, looks like some language might have been updated in there. Is that what I have some highlighted language or did I highlight that? Was there any changes?
I don't think there were any changes.
Well, that's my mistake on there. Okay. Policy eight oh five, waste reduction and recycling. Also did not notice any changes?
Also no changes.
Thank you. All right. Policy eight oh seven, naming of school buildings. I did not see changes. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any comments or questions? All right. And then policy nine oh three, visitors to schools. I also did not note any changes. Any comments or questions? All right. Those will be coming back at least two more times, I believe, before we have a vote. There are no first reading of policies this evening. We do have two policies under second reading of policies. We have discussed and had these presented a number of times. Are there any additional comments or questions at this point? Okay, seeing none. I thank everybody for their policy work and we will move on to number six, superintendent relations. Dr. Stallow.
Don't have anything under that, but I will move on to informational items. I guess it could fall under either. But I did want to, good morning, board members, or good morning, good evening, board members. I want to update you on a few leadership position and minor organizational change recommendations that I'll, I'll bring forward for action at the March fourteenth board meeting. As you recall, after the reduction of the assistant superintendent position and the resignation of the director of teaching and learning last year, I made two administrative assignment changes for this current year. I'll be bringing forward a recommendation for permanent contracts for both leaders who filled these positions. So first of all, that was Dr. Dan Edwards. He was asked to assume the duties of the director of teaching and learning. And what we found is with the elimination of the assistant superintendent, we also need a point person to collaborate with building principals on student issues. So I've also added that to the responsibility of of what Dan's position will be. Secondly, last year, Joe Kabushak accepted the duties of the Twin Oaks Middle School Principal, again, as a one-year position. So I'll be bringing forward a recommendation for a permanent contract for Dr. Edwards as well as for Joe Kabushak. Both Dan and Joe have done an outstanding job in their current roles and we are fortunate that they both agreed to remain in them for in in service to our school district. So those will both come forward for action on the fourteenth of March. I also have researched and reviewed district office organizational structures in some other school districts that have a similar structure as us and based on some administrative needs that we have in terms needs that we have in terms of policy leadership, district systems, procedures and coordination, I'll be bringing forward a revised job description with no changes to his contract for Jim Coran from Executive Director of Human Resources to Executive Director of Administrative Services. So there'll be so, some job changes in that that just reflect a more comprehensive leadership oversight. And in order to provide a, a bit of a backfill for human resources to supports Jim, to support Jim's additional oversight, I'll be recommending the promotion of Emily Herman from Assistant Director of Human Resources to the Director of Human Resources with additional responsibilities and compensation aligned with those duties. So those things will come forward in the board packet for March 14th and for the board meeting.
Okay. Any other informational items?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
All right, at this time, we will move on to public forum. We have one speaker this evening and for the record, I will just say that a board meeting is a public meeting, meaning that the public has the right to listen and observe to the work of the board when a quorum is present. It is not the public's meeting, so we don't directly engage. It is not required by Minnesota statute to offer public comment during meetings, however, it's long been the policy and tradition of this district and the school board to welcome public input in a variety of ways, including at our meetings. It is our policy that during board study sessions, speakers may only address topics that are on the agenda and for that reason, public forum takes place at the end, so speakers have the most recent information to inform the comments that they are making. And just for the sake of our listening community, it is our expectation, speakers at public forum are district staff, students, parents, taxpayers or residents of our PLSAS community and the reason we ask for public comment is to hear from our local stakeholders. At least 10 minutes prior to each meeting, a sign-up sheet will be available at the meeting site for individuals to sign up for, to address the board. Only those whose names in connection to the district appear on the sign-up sheet at the time of the meeting is called shall be permitted to address the board. Up to five speakers shall be permitted a maximum of three minutes each. Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage or potentially defame individual board members, employees or students, nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Also, speakers may be precluded from disclosing personally identifiable private data regarding employees or students. Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules or time constraints may be told his or her privilege of speaking has ended. Board members shall listen respectfully to issues brought to them by the community, but not engage the individuals during their time. The board shall not deliberate or take action during the open forum regarding an issue presented. If follow-up by administration is necessary, the chair shall request that the superintendent follow-up on the matter. And when the board chair proceeds with the meeting, audience comments are no longer in order, however, the board members retain the right to call on district administrators for information to assist the board. Tonight, Vice Chair Amy Crosby will have time cards to keep you on track. You'll have three minutes. I'm going to invite forward tonight our Speaker Natalie Barnes. She's speaking Strategic Direction Number One, which included our MTSS work and our instructional equity excellence work. Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you. Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Stalik and everyone here. I just wanted to speak tonight regarding the strategic, strategic directions, where that's tough to say.
It is.
Just so everybody knows, I have four children, they range in first to ninth grade and I have not, in all honesty, sent any of them to Prior Lakes Savage Area Schools except for one year in kindergarten for my ninth grader. My eighth grade daughter wants to attend Prior Lake High School and it is a household dilemma. We moved to the district 15 years ago due to the remarkable schools, community and education and now we as a family and especially parents are at a crossroads. We pay very high taxes for education in our community compared to others and mostly because we have no large chain commercial stores and all of that, we know, yet we wrestle due to the changes that have occurred over the past five years to our district. Our schools, our test scores, we have stepped away from the basics of education and are now as a district more focused on agendas and initiatives. However, I must say that the presentation by all of the, the principals today gave me some hope, so thank you for that. As I reviewed the last five years of test scores consistently declining, but conflict and, and issues continue to escalate in our district. What has changed over the course of the last five years? All of these initiatives have been added. Are they actually working? Is public education now becoming a social program? The board advances its vision for, and this is just from your things, the board advances its vision by focusing on student achievement, partnering with community and being proactive and addressing issues that affect education on local, state and national levels. An effective board uses ongoing two-way communications to build trust and support among the community, board, superintendent, staff and students, focuses on community-wide concerns and values that best support student achievement rather than being overly influenced by special interests. I'm just reminding, this is something that you all know. For the members of this board, you choose the superintendent policy and strategic direction, directions that are best to suit our stu, schools and our community, but we, and we are parents, are entrusting our children into your hands. Your decisions directly affect your neighbors, your community, your teachers, yourselves. Are you listening to us? Childhood should be a carefree time where children learn and play in ways that are developmentally appropriate, appropriate. Also, parents and teachers are tired of academic standards like Common Core and high-stakes testing. Trying to increase high-stakes standards involving a child's feelings seems not only ill-advised, but sometimes dubious. I'm referring to SEL. The real question is whether or not SEL, social emotional learning, can be incorporated as a structured, formal, assessed element of education and that question does not yet have a clear and affirmative answer. I would say that the greatest of them is that a number of families believe, and this is your families and your community, addressing SEL aspects at home in a manner that is consistent with the family's religious and cultural values are what's important to us. Can SEL violate student and family privacy, including possible HIPAA violations? Frankly, SEL could become abused in a similar manner to how the Soviets abused mental health authority and you can look that up on your own. I just want to say that I really do believe that all of you have the best intentions and at heart and I just hope that as you go through, please, and please use public forums or town hall meetings to actually help answer some of the questions from us as, as parents and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming this evening. Okay, at this time, we will be adjourning study session. May I have a, a quick show from admin and board? Do you want a brief recess or do you want to go right in? A brief recess it is, let's gather back here in about five minutes. Thank you.